It's called the work session to order. Nine o'clock.
Campbell?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Miller?
Okay, first of Winterfest, Amanda. A lot of way that stamp.
Hello. Wanted to say a little bit about the Winterfest. Marty invited me to come. So I've been doing some work with Warfino County Economic Development Director there. He was tasked with doing an ice festival or a snow festival next year. So when I was talking to Mayor Bill and he said, "Well, we ought to bring it here too." So we've been talking about, we've been meeting for about the past almost month and a half now, about having it on the Highway of Legends. So we picked up February 2nd through the 4th of next year because Alamosa and Breckenridge both do a snow ice festival the last weekend in January. So we thought, let's just tag on to that. We've got some, a couple of promotional ideas around tagging on to that directly. So, 2nd through the 4th, the 2nd will be like a local kickoff and we'll be centering on the 28 miles between La Vida and Monument Lake. And February 3rd will be noon to 10:00 PM and February 4th from 10:00 to 4:00. And I have a schedule on here, types really small, but we already kind of got planned what we want to have day to day. And again, the dates are determined from similar events in Breckenridge and Alamosa. So here's the schedule. The kickoff, February 2nd, will happen in La Vida, in Walsenburg, and in Trinidad, kind of for locals to get them very excited about what's going to happen. We want to have winter sports and activities, ice fishing, ice and snow sculpting competition. We have plans for a snow shoeing race through Kucharra Valley. There'll be kids' games, contests, drawings, music bands. We have two people who are working on this, who have a lot of experience with bands that have record labels, right? And then beer circles. The other day I heard for the first time beer circles. I know that there's a new brewery that's opening in La Vida, maybe we could draw some attention to them through beer circles. Or maybe beer circles in other locations. So these are the people that are all involved. Carlton Croft is the Economic Development Director in Warfino County. He has 30 years background in radio and TV advertising and sponsorship, so he's kind of spearheading that area of it. I, me, I'm a financial advisor, but I have also 36 years in marketing and advertising. I've taught marketing and advertising and I've written marketing plans, business plans, and design. So I'm kind of coordinating a lot of this. And then Marty, who has, you already know, tons of experience and she can move mountains with her pinky finger. Gillian Cheek owns an event production company. She is in the process of moving down here. She's owned her own production company and she's been in event marketing and production for the past 15 years. Brett McGraw, he is the owner of Buckhorn Ridge Outfitters and he's done plenty of event planning and you know, he's done the Caveman Festival for plenty of years. And then Lou Stasco, who is absolutely amazing. She owns a PR agency. She's worked with Wheat Ridge, Lodo. In fact, the mayor of Wheat Ridge referred to her as the secret in his back pocket because she does great things to attract attention to a city. And in fact, one of the county commissioners of Warfino referred to her as a genius in one of the last meetings that I went to. So, the objective, objective is to bring tourism dollars to the area, build a reputation for more views and outdoor recreation, show off the Highway of Legends, and show off our communities and bring activity to the area for winter. Because as we all know, there's kind of a gap between December and April where there's not a lot of festivals. So the opportunity is our impact for nonprofits. We have so many awesome nonprofits here and in Warfino County. We'd love for them to come forward and maybe either sponsor some of these events, and that don't mean, you know, they're nonprofits, they don't have a lot of money, but we can have other sponsors and they can be the ones to facilitate the events and they can be passing out their literature, talking to them about events, et cetera. This is also a great opportunity to track visitor data. And that's something I want to talk, that Marty and I are going to work together a lot on. Because there's, I know there's a lot more new technology to be able to track who comes here for different tourism events. At the moment, all we have is like anecdotal information. "Oh yeah, I came down here with my family, we came all the way from Oklahoma," et cetera. We want some way to be able to track that data better, because it's very valuable data for y'all in the future to find out what, what are the best kind of events to have here. Okay? Also gives us great opportunity to create more talking points about our area. What is it, we all know, we're on the verge of greatness. What kind of talking points would we like to provide to the city and anybody who goes, their locals, to say, when we have visitors, what can they say about our town and what's going on? And we're doing it with Warfino County, because two counties can work together, do more and be bigger than just one. Right? COVID decimated a whole lot of stuff, a lot of people don't want to go out of their house. And in fact, the studies that we saw from CDR Associates, if y'all saw those, about what people do in the county, what they do, the majority of people don't even leave their property. And the number two thing they come out of their homes to do or off their property is to walk their dogs. So how is it that we can pull a lot more people off their properties out of their homes and come to this? So, communications and promotion, as I said, we're working with a PR agency. She has developed a strategic publicity plan. She's also talked about inviting top community leaders and/or the media to be judges for the ice sculpting or snow sculpting festival or contest. Invite groups to participate. She has a number, probably eight different outdoor recreation groups in Colorado that she's going to plant stories in and communicate with. Also, we talked about fan trips for influencers into the area. So people who write for travel magazines or blogs, et cetera, we'll invite them down here, maybe about like August, September timeframe and drive them around, show them the beautiful area, and ask for them a vision for what this is going to look like. Also, as I said, we want to tie into Breckenridge and Alamosa, so maybe, we've already started communicating with them. So what would it take to tie in together, to be able to promote what's going to happen in Trinidad, what's going to happen on the Highway of Legends, at their own events? What would that take? What kind of trade would we want to do? The budget, we figure about approximately $65,000. That will cover the bands, music, security, supplies, rentals, ice. Definitely security, want to pay attention to that. Grants, we're going to be applying for the tourism grant here, as well in Warfino County. Sponsorship, we compiled a list of about 26 larger sponsors that could sponsor at $2,500 or more. And we're leveraging the World Journal. Have not talked to the Chronicle yet, but we talked to the World Journal about doing this, since they have a presence in Warfino and here, about helping us sell the sponsorships. And they're totally on board, they love that.
So in terms of grants, and I can send you some stuff also. The Carr Department of Tourism has great marketing grants and they're, their deadlines are usually in August, and then you can spend the money in next year, which is when you're wanting to do this.
Okay.
And then when you get connected with them, they also have a PR department, and they do press trips. And so you may want to connect with them and see if they have any that are already coming out that would be willing to do your press trip.
Fantastic.
Okay. And Marty should have some of that.
I have all that information.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Turn on the mic. Okay, so, where did you say, where did you say that? There we go. So what do we want to call it? When we played with logos and played with the name, we went on, we want to include the highway, Highway of Legends, right? We want mountains, we want it to show cold, we want outdoor sports. And what's really cool, same went to the planning meeting for the City Highway of Legends last week, and they talked about all the different geological formations, all that kind of stuff. It's really the birthplace of the Rocky Mountains. So we've come up with a bunch of different things and we've kind of settled on the Shoal Oh So Cold Days.
So Cold.
Or Oh So Cold Winter Festival.
So Cold.
Oso.
No, So Cold Oso.
Shoal. Yeah, oh yeah, yeah. Well, it could be So Cold Oso, it could be Shoal Oh So Cold. I've got a number of things.
Which Shoal?
City Highway of Legends.
Oh, okay.
Shoal Oh So Cold. Because we want people to say, what is that? With the mouse.
Tongue twister.
Yeah.
So which one, the tongue twister?
I kind of like the one with the bear and the Shoal Oh So Cold Winterfest. Do you like that one? And then maybe I put little, you know, stick people walking towards the mountains or something, or maybe some ski tracks or some snow shoe tracks, something like that. I don't want to make it too complicated, but I don't know whether the bear with the mountains in the background and nobody on the highway and nobody in the mountains, if that looks too barren.
I think it's too barren. You want to show some.
Yeah. Show people or show tracks. I loved the idea that you were doing the Nordic Games, because as I said, what, what culture has not been appropriated? The Scandinavians.
Breckenridge does a lot of Nordic stuff.
Oh, do they?
Yeah, they have a whole, Aller Days.
Okay.
And yeah, there's a big, they have a huge festival for Aller Days.
I love ideas, I love the idea of people walking around in biking hats.
So anyway, doesn't mean you can't steal some.
Okay. But I'd love your feedback, what you, what you like about that, what you don't like about it. And then lastly, these are some of the activities that we thought, thought some of the sponsorships could sponsor and some of the nonprofits could help facilitate. The ice fishing, we already know that Fisher's Peak Outfitter can do demonstrations around that, so we thought we'd do that at Mountain Monument Lake. So ice fishing, Nordic race, snow shoe, cross-country skiing in Kucharra Pass. Have you ever heard of a frozen wet t-shirt contest? Frozen Dead Guy Festival does it. And what they do is they completely wet the t-shirt, they fold it, and then they freeze it. And each contestant has to see how quickly they can open it and put it on.
Did it at a hockey game a lot.
Oh, did they?
They get intermissions.
Snow shuttle races, Jared told us about that. And then robbing the snowbank where you just have a whole lot of snow. And then the different sponsors can put gifts or souvenirs in there, or money, or something like that, and then the kids can dig it out. Ice axe throwing, horse fun, and then ice or snow sculpting locations.
There's a lot of talk about this, the horse back rider, the horses that pull the skiers behind them.
Yes.
Become more mainstream. I don't know, I think that's a trend a little bit, but it's super fun. And that, I wonder if you could get that. They do it in Levalle and they do it at the Stee.
And they do it, and actually they do reindeer races. Yeah, for the first time I watched lily ham.
And I thought, how much snow we get.
Yeah, that's a big thing.
If it was this year, we wouldn't be doing very well.
Well, except that up there, you're getting, you have more snow.
Oh, no. I'm still on Kucharra, La Vida, oh, they don't.
Well, and Kucharra can make their own snow as well.
Well, Kucharra, that's scary, yes they can, but other than that.
And Carlton's already found where he can bring big blocks of ice from Denver. So we've got several different, people are already contacting a lot of resources and that's where we came up with the $65,000.
Well, the other thing is you could have alternative non-snow things to show that, you know, we, I mean, one thing about Trinidad that's amazing is that you can literally ride your bike, you know, 365 days a year. There are those crazies that like to put ice baggies on their tires. I'm not, I mean, they are included in that. But I mean, even without them, except for the really snowy days, you can ride your bike here almost every single day of the year. And people do. And I think the idea that we are 365 day a year destination versus just a summer destination is something we really need to develop.
Love that. Okay, so we do want to focus a lot on, on winter games.
We definitely, revenue in the wintertime.
And we've, I mean, the sponsorships will go as low as, I think we talked about $50 or $100. So maybe people in Trinidad, you know, vendors that are in Trinidad, merchants who are in Trinidad, can actually have a table in La Vida. And then we bring people from La Vida down here and we do some cross-pollination. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
Sounds like a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. You'll see my application.
No?
Actually.
Jean.
Jean, I'm going to see everything.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Marty knows how to plan an agenda. Goodness to that. Good job, Samantha, very interesting.
Thank you.
I'm really here on behalf of the Trinidad Historic Preservation Commission, which is quasi, oh, can you pass that out? Quasi-governor, can't say it like that. We help to look at historical renovations for our architectures, buildings here that are in the Corazon de Trinidad and have several, have done several surveys in the lab. I've been on this commission for four years, so I'm still learning all the, all the items that we have. This meeting today is to invite you all to be part of our two-day event. Our commission is in charge to educate the public about the historical preservation. What is it about? It's about economic development, it's about keeping our price, our properties high, and it's about restoring any cultural activities. And that's part of, if you can go down to Sunday, I'd like to start with Sunday 1st, which is June 4th. And do you have any more of those papers? I was going to give Tom one. Did you get one? No. Do you have any more? Can you get?
Back there.
So. And Arc. Contact with Main Street, has been with Kim Schultz and with the Triggers to do an exhibition, historic vintage game. And we have, so far, we'll start at 11:30 on Sunday with about a 1 o'clock game. And we all have three endings. We have the Trinidad First Responders, going to be part of the team, that's the New Elk Colte. And we have, the Triggers going to be the Big Six, which was a restaurant and one of their first games that won the national or state championship, the Big Six baseball game. So we hope, so that's our Sunday activity. And the 3 to 6, the Triggers game with Santa Fe Fuego. So we don't have quite a bit of marketing plan, but we appreciate anything you can do to help us with this. That is it. Oh, here you go, Tom, I forgot to give you, did I get you one? Do you need one?
I didn't get one.
I put them right here.
Oh, she didn't get one. Well, let me give that to her. I have some more. I have this in red mostly. So we start on the 3rd, which is at Space to Create. We are working with the Creative District and we are working with Main Street. We are going to be coming to you for some marketing money too, at the end of the month. Art has been working with us on that. Our registration at 8:30 in the Space to Create is our second annual Echoes of History, saving Trinidad's past. 9:00, we'll have a welcome by the mayor, and Elizabeth Kelly's our chairman person. At 9:15, we have two keynote speakers. One will be from History Colorado, which is now today in our presence here at the City Hall. I guess they call it auditing, or CLG, or Certified Local Government, which is what our ordinance in 1970, was called ordinance 1975, that we are designated as a certified local government in order to get grant funding from History Colorado for restoration of buildings. And so, that's why we're including them as a guest speaker with Calvin Smith at Trinidad State College. 9:00 will be then and now panels. We have engaged Gregory, sorry, make sure you put Gregory Friesman on 9:30 with the CNSA Architects for Fox Theater and Eugene, I mis-spelled that. Guana, we found from KJ, he was a projectist. So the then and now is about talking what was happening before. And the now would be Greg Fries at East Street School, Paul Glenn. And this will be a four-person panel. He's with PSTM at the, and he's done the East Street School renovations. And they are open, taking people to rent. Now, if you don't know about that, probably do. They have 500 square feet apartments, studio apartments, to up to 1,000. And they have a $1,200 monthly to about 1,800, but they have other affordable units if you qualify to. So that is being run by, we'll have Louise from, it's called Red Line Contemporary Art Center in Denver, she'll be speaking too. Then we have 11 to 12, we'll have breakout sessions. One of our training is local landmarking, which Tom Murphy here did with his Chappelle Building. He submitted an application and he has, it's about a 20-page application, wouldn't you say?
Similar.
It's similar. He had to do research and photography of his building and how he was going to restore it. And he'll be in part of that local landmarking, telling people how they can do it. We're identifying the number of contributing buildings that can apply for this, which are a lot in the Corazon. And the second breakout is Wheeler Monument, which you have heard about from our member Carlos Madrid. And our local storytellers. We have tried to include somebody from Warfano, the Wajatoya, Sandy Dola, Allison Schumaker. And you can help give input on any of these categories if you'd like to be a part of them and participate. The 12:15, here is my thank you to the Tourism Board, because our, our business, New Legends, was started by the Tourism Board in 2015 with commissioning of 12 banners that were for local legends. And so during our lunchtime, we're going to have quite an interesting game about identifying these local legends. One of them is Felipe Baca, founder of Trinidad. There's our, the Fisher, Waldemar Fisher, founder of the Fisher's Peak and Simpson's Rest. And we have about 12 from the 1850s to 1950s. We'll have a kind of a, what I call it, the lore of the legends and the... Back to the 1:30 is when we would like to have your participation and I, Marty and I talked about who to contact, which I did, Kirsty Rogers, but we wanted to get your app that is about the historical architecture. I think there's 42 buildings on that with video and audio, or audio.
Video and audio.
Video and audio. So we wanted to have a breakout session then, which would be the Corazon de Trinidad Walking Tour. And I don't know if your kiosk will be available by then, but you might want to point that out or whatever. And then our second is a, we're reserving the trolley to tour about nine buildings. And we would have the trolley come from 1:30 to 4:00 and take as many people as want to go on the trolley tour that would. And these are buildings that have been, the ones that don't have the asterisk are the ones that we're going to be landmarking. Chappelle House has already been landmarked, Fort Wooton and the City Hall and Carnegie Library. So that's what we've been doing in the last, actually, three years, it came about. Wayne Pritchard was one of the first commissioners and he had, he was involved with getting the procedure and the policies and everything like that. And so four of our buildings have been landmarked. We're trying to get the next East, East Street School landmarked. Well, they have to be completed, so that's when you have to start submitting your application. We are online too, with the, our application materials are online and you can, the people that are eligible have to be 50 years old, the buildings, and they can apply, so that it helps. I don't know if Tom was able to get any grants, if you have any?
I'm working on it.
You're working on it.
Tax credit, I'm working on my tax credits.
So tax credits are also available for people that restore buildings.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Would you do, like, as a homeowner, like an information session on the tax credits, how you get them, what is involved, and then also how to insure it? I live in a landmarked house and it's been very difficult and incredibly expensive to insure. And so if you could find some more resources on that for homeowners in the community, about, you know, what it is to do the historic preservation and the tax credits, because in the rural community, they're like 35 cents on the dollar. They're really good credits. But to be able to do an info session on how to do those.
Right.
So that you have something other than just like passive information, that you have some like active useful information in your...
Good idea. I think that qualifies in that. Number one, 11 o'clock, the local landmarking process. So I think we'll, but I didn't think about houses, it was more commercial properties, but we will, that's a good idea.
Because there's tax credits for your individual homes.
Right.
And they're quite good. I've used them in a house in Denver, I wrote a story.
Oh, great.
But they're available in rural communities or lawless, or they're better credits here.
I will get into, we'll ask our people that are here from History Colorado if they have some. I know I've got a lot of material, so I think we'll have some handouts that day. And if I can count on you today, I can write you down what you want to volunteer for. And most of our board is a volunteer board, all of it, except we have a staff employee, Chris Hall, who's done amazing work for us. We do need to help the Fort Wooton people get some more money so they can get that kicked off and restored, especially the Holloway Hall. So we're working with them and, but I like that idea about including a property, private home, because there's one up on Adamus Street, I don't know if you've seen it, the Yellow House up on Adamus at the top where it turns into Grant. That guy's been working on that place almost 20 years. And individually putting together the house, probably by himself. And so, if you guys want to think about it and then get back to me, I'm the kind of operating or the chairperson of the event, along with our five-member commission. And we'll have some more material out about it. If you want to send this to anybody, you can address it. And we'll have an ad in the New Legends Magazine, this coming up April. Do you all need any more of these? Or do you have any questions that I can, no, hesitantly answer? Thank you for being so quick. If you don't want any more, just send out to your friends, bring them in. We also have Las Vegas, City of Las Vegas, also coming up here with their Citizens Committee for Historic Preservation. They're sending some people up here and we're trying to get some interactive exchanges with that group. They've been around 26 years in Las Vegas and since we're so new, we're trying to outreach to different communities. If you have any more from Denver, let me know. All right. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Jean. Okay, my dear, you're up.
All right. Oh, this is not going to plug into my iPad. Can we loop this in? Okay, so while she's working on that, so, communications with visitors, potential visitors, and how we engage them, how our local businesses, attractions. No, I don't have one. No, iPad doesn't have one. Here it is, right there. Nope. Anyway, so I got to looking at some different apps that we're already promoting and how they function, and came across this wonderful app called the Parent Companies Wish Trip. What they are is a destination app. It's an SIAAS app, so web on-demand app, that you can download onto your smartphone. And the cool thing about it is, it's a drag-and-drop system that we would have full control of to build our own app, a location app, Visit Trinidad, Colorado. Inside that app is the ability to put all of your attractions. It's a GPS-based app, so you can input all of your trails. What they can do is create an itinerary. If they want to go to the Beach Shop, they put that in as a location. If they want to go to the Dad Lounge, they put that in as a location. If they want to go to Fisher's Peak, they put that in as a location. And the app builds them an itinerary and takes them on a tour. You can put in self-guided tours, you can put in driving tours with video, audio, and text. The really cool thing about this app, because it's GPS-based, you can see your visitors in real time and communicate and engage them in real time. You can see where they are in the city, how much time they're spending at those locations in the city, and where you need to work on to build marketing to get them to other avenues. If you have a citywide event, you can do notifications if they're coming near the visitor center. The one thing that the app can't track is where they're from for privacy issues. So we overcome that by a notification popping up and saying, "If you would like a free Trinidad brick magnet, tell us where you're from." They come into the visitor center, they get their map. If we have a trail that's impassable, we can notify them immediately. We determine the geographical area in which this app functions, and at the end of the day, we're able to track our visitors on an ongoing basis, right from the app.
So I did send it to you, that I don't know if you have your phones or not. It's in your email.
We went through a demo with the people who developed the app. Another cool thing about the app is that you can do challenges and games.
When did you send it?
Just now.
I got it.
There it is.
So let's say you have Art Ocade going on, and you want to do a little scavenger hunt during Art Ocade to get people to hit key points and areas that you want them to go to. You create a challenge within the app that they can use. The really cool thing about this app is it...
Let's start. Okay, so I'm just going to get around that.
That's okay. It creates a controlled environment by which to engage visitors, potential visitors, and residents alike. Residents can use this app to go on trails and take advantage of challenges that we've laid out for the map, for the Fisher's Peak trails. So we can download from Fisher's Peak, from all trails, we can download all those trail maps and export them into our app and have them right in there for people to utilize. The kicker for this app and where it's going to benefit us is at the end of their trip, The kicker for this app and where it's going to benefit us is at the end of their trip, within 30 minutes of them being done with their trip, all of the pictures and the videos and the itineraries that they used while they were here. In that app, creates a video for them and emails it to them with our brand on the video that they can share into their social media about their vacation in Trinidad, Colorado.
This link just has a video of you two.
It is the demo video that we did with them. Is that it?
Just trying to let me do it. I wanted to pull up my email. I thought if I pulled up my email.
Can I glue chip it?
Maybe.
Or airdrop it? Let's see.
Kim's in a meeting, so I can't get her to do it.
Kim to me?
Can I send it to you?
I have it, but not disappeared.
If I could pull up browser, but it won't let me pull it up. Wish Trip. No need for reading glasses. Right? Two Ts.
About three Os.
So why don't I do?
It's a touchy little thing. It hooks up to the internet.
Does that hook up to the internet?
Otherwise it would pull in hot. Where's your local cable? Where's the port? I want to see a port. Is it up by the TV up there? There's an ethernet hole up by the TV on the wall. Oh, good job.
I wanted to point out too, what Amanda was talking about, you have all your little challenges that you want people to do. That's all something that can be programmed into the app. And it's a drag-and-drop system, so we build it.
Challenges, whatever.
Your little opportunities.
Okay.
Yep. Things that you want to engage people in and what you want them to participate in.
Didn't work either. My screen's not big enough, but I can play it from my iPad for everyone.
I could open it on my phone.
It's okay, I've got it in my phone.
I got it on my phone, so I could open it on my phone.
Okay, perfect. So basically what it will do is provide us with an opportunity to solve a lot of the issues that we face as far as dealing with negativity on social media platforms, dealing with. So when we advertise for events, the biggest thing that people ask is what else is there to do in Trinidad while we're there for this event? Even while we're dealing with Lifetime and the Rad Fest and the marketing for that, Tamira is asking, what else is there to do in Trinidad? This provides an opportunity for someone to be inside the app and know exactly what else there is to do in Trinidad without having to go through the tedious task of finding it on your own. All the rest runs are listed, all the historic buildings are listed, there's tours in there. The tour that we have on the Visit Trinidad, Colorado site right now can be an active walking tour within that app that somebody can have their smartphone on them and they're walking or driving around Trinidad and they're either listening to or watching the video or both. We can create driving tours. Everything that we want to accomplish is inside this app. Now, it doesn't stand as a marketing team, it doesn't stand as anything like that. But what it provides is an opportunity for us to present ourselves in a certain way and control how we engage potential visitors. And what we give them to do when they come here. You know, when they leave here, they're sharing a video that was created for them by this app of all the things that they did in Trinidad, Colorado. And it's a public video. They can make it available within the app. And when they share it to their social media, it has our brand on it. People can click on it and go to our app and download it. The only thing that we have to do is market the app. So all of the print media, all of the things that we do to advertise Trinidad, we have our little QR code or a link that says, download our app. Incentive can be, get a free souvenir video of your trip. Residents can use it to create new trail challenges, to create tours of their own, to create engagement with the public and the visitors on a different level. If they're here for a festival, and let's say it's a music festival just out of the blue, and it's all venue-based. And such-and-such band is going on at 7:00 at the Trinidad Lounge. A real-time notification pops up within this app, lets them know and gives them a link for directions on how to get to that location.
So I have a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead.
So I saw on there that they have like two locations in the United States that use this.
Pardon?
They have like two locations in the United States that use this, like Seneca Falls and someplace in Ohio. Have you called those places and seen how much engagement they have with this? I'm just curious, like what's the usage? I mean, so I belong to an organization that did a collaborative app with all the liquid arts in Colorado. So beer brewers, distillers, stires. And they created a big app, it was quite expensive, and they got almost no movement from it, even though they did a lot of marketing and from organizations that know pretty well how to market themselves. And nobody wanted to download the app and use it. There were some other flaws, they did charge for it and whatever. So I'm just wondering about usage, because like if I look up Denver, for example, they don't have an app for the city. If I look up San Antonio, they don't have an app for their city. And so why would, you know, how do you get people to download an app for a town like this when you can literally just like drive three blocks? And then have you talked to these smaller communities?
So first and foremost, it's not a paid app, it's a free app to the user. We pay for it. And it's quite affordable, it's $600 a month, which the ROI on an investment like that is tenfold coming back to us. Because we're able to offer a free product for them to download. And it's not just one specific industry or one specific event or one specific thing, it's everything. It takes the place of all trails, it takes the place of every other map, including a GPS map that everybody uses when they're driving around, except for certain, you know, individuals who refuse to. But however, you're using GPS anyway to get from point A to point B. If you're going on a trail, you're using something to get you on that trail and it's usually not a booklet or something that you stick in your pocket and take with you, it's usually your smartphone. How, this is a new app as far as what it offers to tourism departments. You only see it used in a couple areas because it's new. They are actively sitting down with tourism boards. Agrotourism is how it started, how the app started, where they're showing the possibilities of this app and it's very exciting. So we take on this app and we're one of the first places in Colorado to use it. They're already planning to sit down with these other cities in Colorado and promote this app. So if this app is used throughout Colorado, then we have a network with all the other destinations in Colorado. As far as usage goes, that's up to us to promote it. And like I said, the kicker is the souvenir video. You don't have to create a video of your vacation, you don't have to go through and edit your photos and pick which ones you like to share on social media. You have a video that is sent to you of your entire trip with the GPS route and all your pictures and videos that you took that you can share into social media with your friends and family and show them how beautiful your trip to Trinidad, Colorado was.
I would like to hear from Seneca Falls and those places.
Sure, go ahead.
No, but I mean, I think if you're going to present this to us to pay for, we should get, you should do the research. I mean, you're paid for by the city, we're all volunteers, to call them and see how it's being used.
I have no problem doing that.
I mean, that's.
I have no problem doing that.
That would be really nice to get the data from them.
I would like for you guys to watch the video as well so that you can see the demo for yourself. And so that the developer can present to you his product and how it operates and functions and the value of it for the city. Because that's really where it's at. And how it's marketed will determine the users that we have. So yes, I would like to reach out to those places and find out what their usage is. But generally speaking, it's up to us to market it and get the usage that we want out of it.
Is there a trial period or?
There is a 30-day trial period, so you actually get 13 months for the price of 12. So 30 days, you're able to build it, test it, utilize it, you have support. Unlimited updates, unlimited information, unlimited challenges, unlimited trails. Everything that we're already sending people to other apps to download, because that's what we're doing. We have it on our website. How many? Four or five different apps, right? This is one, it's branded by us, it's administered by us, it's a controlled environment. And it's one app and it's free.
What apps are you promoting now?
All Trails, we have that VR app for the walking tour.
Yep, there's actually several, I don't know, I'm right off the top of my head.
I mean, All Trails is a nationwide thing and, you know, tons of, I mean.
Right, but you're sending them away from us.
Away from us, we're keeping them on brand.
But people come here, I don't think we're sending people to All Trails, All Trails is bringing people here because they already have.
No, we are sending to you at All Trails.
I mean, we may send them, but I mean, are they like looking at everything and then looking at, they already probably have All Trails, is what I'm saying, because it's an established thing. What I'm wondering is, you know, what other apps are we using and what kind of data or what kind of use are they getting? Like our walking tour, how many people are downloading that and how many people are using it? And how are we promoting? I mean, I think that's something that we don't necessarily know. I mean, I think it's super cool, like you showed it to us last year, it's phenomenal. But, you know, it would be great to know what that data looks like and how are we promoting our existing apps? Because that is something we already have.
Yeah, we send them to Facebook, we send them to Instagram, we send them to, there's lots of different places where we send our people for information about our city. This would be one that we control ourselves.
Right, and to clarify, we don't have apps. We have apps that we are promoting because we've used those apps to set something up on them that we want people to engage in. However, this app covers everything, including data analytics and statistics in real time. That's where the most benefit comes from.
If you get people to download it, I mean, that's the big thing, is like you still have to get people to actively download it.
Yes.
And so that's why I'd like to see like.
You still have to get people to watch your Facebook page, you still have to get people to.
Yeah. Always, you always have to get people to do something, it's lead the horse to water, get it to drink. You're offering something for free, a souvenir video courtesy of.
And then they could undownload it.
And they can, the thing is that we're already asking them to download All Trails. And let me point out that this company is already planning to sit down with Crystal Driling and CPW to replace All Trails as a branded app for CPW and Fisher's Peak where we can, again, control the environment and control what we want people to see, how we want them to experience Trinidad. All, you know, so one of the biggest things I get when I'm on social media is where can I go to eat today? Where can I go to do this today? It's all there in the app and they can create an itinerary with their GPS tracking system to take them on their whole day.
But I mean, admittedly, this town uses Facebook where other places do not.
Right.
Like other communities don't. They use Google because they can control their content. And they use multiple, they use public calendars and things, and there's no public bitch forum like we currently have in our town, right? I mean, okay, your next-door apps and things like that create that in microlevels, right? So it's unique here that people are using that, but visitors don't use that. People who.
Yes, they do.
Not really.
Yes, they do. I'm on, I'm paid to handle our social media marketing. I'm paid, can you listen for a second? I'm paid to pay attention to these things. And whether you value my experience and my input or not, this is what I do. I see it on a daily basis where somebody's in the chatter group bitching and complaining about how horrible Trinidad is. And here comes a potential visitor, yes, I'm not coming there, what an awful place. It happens on a weekly basis. We have local entrepreneurs who fancy themselves digital creators and will set up a page, Trinidad, Colorado. We'll let it die or we'll be doing personal agenda marketing and it gets confusing for potential visitors. Again, this is a controlled environment where we can engage them on a level where we can't outside of the app.
All right, thank you very, very, very much.
So I would suggest that you look at the video that I sent. I also have some other materials that I can send you that would give you more information so you can be more educated on it.
Okay.
Thank you for your artwork.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Some very positive things.
My dear, it's wonderful. Okay, where are my other little piece of paper now?
Yeah.
Okay, Dawn, you're up. Marty, you're having PR time.
So we need a master calendar.
You need to get up here.
We need a master calendar, a working calendar for ourselves for the entire year. Last year and the year before, we missed the opportunity to really promote downtown for Christmas because we didn't really talk about it until October, November, and at that point, it's too late. Right now, we kicked the can down the curb for our RFP. And now it's too late to get that marketing material for summer because summertime is, all of the, any print ads especially, they do their calendar or they do their advertising marketing about six months out. So in wintertime, they're planning their summer issues. In springtime, they're planning their fall issues. And we're getting proposals from magazines that we've reported in like at the last minute. And so we're not given the time to really think about the ads that we're placing. You know, we're trying to vote online, which we shouldn't be doing, we should be voting in person, we should have that copy presented to us in these meetings and have the time to really thoughtfully think that out. And also thoughtfully think out each quarter and what we want to be promoting. So in December, we should be having meetings talking about the summer. In this time of year, we should be talking about the fall because that's how a media calendar and a PR calendar work. And so I would like for us to have a master calendar with all of the existing ads that we place, what their deadlines are around the country and around Colorado and, you know, wherever those are. Like we have two in our packet today. And that should be on a master calendar of like what we have done and if we want to continue it. So we can have really thoughtful conversations instead of always doing everything like at the last minute and being sent things by Marty that need to, feedback that are due in two weeks or whatever, or due before our next meeting. Because we only have one regular meeting a month, I think this will help us really think more long-term. think more long-term and have a better plan. So this is what I would like.
I agree and I, that's what we wanted the work session for, the retreat, and we didn't get it. So, maybe we can try to reschedule that and do something like that.
But I don't know that, I think, I think a calendar is an administrative task to know exactly like what magazines we advertise in, what their deadlines are for what we've done, at least in the past, and then have a plan that we look at on our, that's on our agenda every time we're here, like here's where we're at, here's where our upcoming media is, so that we have an, so we have an ability to do that.
Okay.
So, that's what I would like to propose, okay?
Would you like that online where it's something you could privately log into as, as a board?
I don't know, this is a pretty analog board. I mean, I personally use Google Calendar for everything, but I don't know, I mean, if you create your own calendar that, you know, if we have a tourism board calendar and it can be a digital calendar, that's fine, but it needs to be out for the entire year, right? And then deadlines for winter issues of, say, the magazine that we just did for that outdoor thing, the deadline for that is here, all the copy needs to be in here, let's have our conversation about it here. I mean, if you've worked for marketing firms, those, that's standard procedure to have a calendar out and that would help you also, I think, when you're promoting things because then you know, like if you're creating content ahead of time and you need to schedule it, you have that out.
Right.
So I think it actually helps all of us just be a lot more thoughtful and have the time that we need to digest the information that we're putting out there.
Right. So, I have my own personal calendar that I use. However, there are ways where you can take, you can create different coded, you know, color-coded aspects of that calendar and you can share it with different groups of people. So, I think Google Calendar would probably be the best bet on that. And then I can share what I have on my calendar that's applicable, you can keep your personal stuff on your own calendar and I think that'll be the best way. Now, just to let you guys know, I wanted to mention something real quick. So I've been working with Jeff Montoya, Jason Decker and Joe, and I'm gonna butcher his name.
Cause.
Yes, from Tarantula Cycles. And what we've done is we've created a free marketing seminar for our licensed business owners in Trinidad, Colorado, to help them develop their brand, to help them develop marketing strategies on a basic level, like how to market and present themselves on social media, what type of website presence they might need. And it all helps to bring your local entrepreneurs, which are your commodities, everything in this town is your commodity, the, the attractions, the venues, the events, the restaurants, it's all a commodity when it comes to revenue for the city of Trinidad, getting them on the same page with us. And I think at some point, they would probably like to have a meeting with the tourism board on a quarterly basis to develop co-branding strategies, to develop teamwork, or just to be on the same page where advertising strategies are going, so that they can pull their own weight too. If there's opportunities where there can be shared advertising expenses, that will lessen the load for the tourism department and for them. So, a small investment into sitting down with them on a quarterly basis and developing strategic campaigns for that quarter, that upcoming quarter, is going to make it so that when you do an advertisement and say, "We have Artokade this quarter," and Artokade isn't lax in their marketing, but I'm just using an example. So somebody goes and researches Artokade outside of that ad, they're finding the same level of advertising from that independent business owner as they are from the tourism board. So I think that's a really exciting thing and I really appreciate those guys coming forward to help the community to beef up their advertising and marketing.
I would like to comment.
Okay.
I, I think, what I've seen since I've been on this board is we're moving more and more towards improving how we promote the city, how we promote tourism, the activities that are, that are being offered. Um, you know, the, the creation of the position that you're in is a positive move, move. And I, if we'd have been able to have the retreat, what Don is speaking of, the calendar was actually one of the suggestions that, that I'd had, so that was there. It's a simple request. I, I get the feeling that, that administration is being blamed for not automatically thinking that we need that. A simple request, anytime I've requested any information from Marty, it's, it's there in discussion. So I, I think we're moving in that direction and I think it's, you know, it'd be a good idea to have something we can look at and say, "We need to be thinking, you know, next September about this ad" and things like that. But a, a, a simple request, you know, would have, would have sufficed.
I'm not blaming anybody, I just, we don't have one and I'm just recommending that we create one.
Yep, and we're moving in that direction because, you know, clear communications is extremely important, not just in, in tapping into engaging potential visitors, but just between what's going on in Trinidad. I noticed a huge disconnect between individuals who are working on similar or the same projects and they don't even realize that another person is an ass, could be an asset to them or there could be a team effort or that that person is even working on that project. So, it's, it's a very good idea and it's definitely something that we're already moving in the direction of.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Care for Colorado, Marty.
So, the Care for Colorado Coalition is a Colorado Tourism Office. It's not really a promotion, it's more of a campaign. And what they do is they are, it's a stewardship for the state. So basically, encouraging responsible travel, which would in turn protect the visitors, the safety of others and for the residents as well as our visitors. So they created this coalition called Care for Colorado, they work jointly with Leave No Trace. And this plan, the Are You Colorado Ready Destinations Stewardship Plan creates alliances with other stakeholders to magnify the impact of sustainable tourism initiatives. So, in order to make this work, what they do is they invite members of the state, DMOs, tourism boards, et cetera, to become coalition members. And these coalition members throughout the state share messages via video or little campaigns that the state puts out on a periodic basis and it, it shares different things that our visitors and our residents as well can do to protect our state from over visitation, from our visitors, too many people on our trails that will destroy our trails, taking their dogs and places and not cleaning up after themselves, pack it in, pack it out kind of messaging. And so for, what they're asking is different DMOs and tourism boards and other stewards and stakeholders throughout the state to become members of this coalition. On the, on page three, you'll see some of those stewardship members, you'll notice that Alamosa, Aspen, Boulder, Breckenridge, everybody, even Canyons and Plains, which we are a part of, Carbondale, there's a long list of coalition members. And these members join for a minimum, um, different membership levels. There's a hundred and fifty dollar level all the way to a thousand dollars and it doesn't limit what benefits you receive as a coalition member, it's just the more you give, the more the coalition can actually do. So, what I'm asking today is if you wanted to become a Colorado, Care for Colorado Coalition stewardship member at the lowest level of a hundred and fifty dollars and then we can receive the toolkits that the CTO office puts out and we can share them in all of our messaging. So on our Facebook pages, on our website pages, on our Instagram pages, wherever we have an ability to post information for our visitors. So that's what I'm asking you today.
Would our possible new app be on, be available?
Um, possibly, yes, absolutely. So we can put Care for Colorado and Leave No Trace information on our app, wherever we can. So just keeping our visitors and our residents responsible for our lands and our, our assets.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'd just like to make a motion that we put that on the.
Well, this is a work session, so I will have it on the next agenda.
Yeah, we will, she'll have one.
Make a suggestion.
Make a suggestion. Okay, USA Today, the Advertising, Hunting and Fish Magazine and the Broncos Magazine. I mean, we have seen them, you wanna look at them?
We advertised them both at least last year.
Yes, that's last year's books.
So if you are still interested in advertising for the next round of advertising, you can, we can also put those on the agenda.
I think the hunting and fishing is something we should continue to do, it's a right target. I don't know about Broncos, maybe because they're so lousy, it's hard to learn.
Oh, don't say that, we're Bronco fans, sorry. I don't care if they're lousy or not, we're still Bronco fans.
I think if we do one in theirs, we gotta do one in the Cowboys.
Yeah, well, wait a minute, I don't know. On the hunting and fishing, would we do a half-page?
We did a quarter-page in Hunting and Fish.
Quarter-page, okay, all right.
Here's, here's the one we did in the Broncos Magazine. It, it needs, I mean, the colors are kind of dull and it'd be nice if a human being in there, just not a golf, a golf cart, but it's cute.
Well, and a human being would be nice, but I love the, the picture, I do like the picture of all golf carts. That's, it's a beautiful picture of the golf course and Fisher's Peak, so I think that's very nice.
I think, we, there's some great photographers here now.
Yes.
Maybe we could get Carlos to do some, oh yeah, photographs of that.
I think reaching out to, to the photographers in the area to do a call for photographs would be an excellent idea.
Oh, yeah.
We need some new photographs.
Have you seen her?
Yeah, I have, but.
We, we have done that in the past where we actually had a couple, well, and I don't wanna say contests anymore, but we had them come in.
Right.
And we discussed having them again, but this time being able to put their name on the picture. We were able to do that, because I don't think we could have done that before and now we can.
It was part of the agreement.
Yeah.
It became, it became property of the tourism board.
Property of it, yeah.
That was part of the contest.
And the contest money gives them a little bit of a.
Right.
Money for their product.
Right, so we, we purchased them with the contest money, basically.
I, I posted one of the coming up, or coming south on 25, where you get the Fisher's Peak and all that, I posted, put that on my, one of the two pictures on Facebook.
Right.
And I got over 400.
Beautiful.
Likes and comments.
Yeah, every time we share photography to the Visit Trinidad, Colorado Facebook page, we get no less than 500 engagements within an hour or two. And it's, and it's great.
I'd like to know any questions.
Yeah, most of mine, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Most of mine came from Texas.
Beautiful.
Oddly enough.
Beautiful. Well, that's advertising.
Yeah.
I just have a question on the USA Today, what day is that, what day is that ad run and how much does that cost?
US Today?
Yeah, USA Today, what day is, is it a day, that comes out daily, so does it run for a week or does it run for a day?
No, it's an annual.
And this is an annual.
Annual publication.
Oh, it's annual publication.
Yeah.
What is the democrat, the readership of that?
Um.
Here's our Trinidad ad.
Distribution for USA Today, there's, um, let's see, 10, 10 million outdoor enthusiasts will be sent a link with complete digital version of the publication. There's 3,247,000 followers on Twitter.
I love that.
332,000 on Facebook.
I think, so we, just once a month or once a week?
No, it's an annual publication, so it comes out once.
One time, one time a year.
You know, I like the app.
Thank you.
And then there's not a tagline, this is okay, but there's not a tagline either.
Well, we've, we've got New York.
Yeah, and, and I, the reason I drew that, because of the writing.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, anything else? Any more questions?
I think they should both be put on the.
On the agenda?
On the agenda. Even if it is Broncos.
Yeah, even if it is our beloved Broncos.
Broncos.
Dear overpaid quarterback, nevermind, I'm sorry.
Yeah, be nice, that's not great either.
I'm pretty sure nobody disagrees with that at this point.
Oh, us Colorado fans, we love our Broncos even though it's very hard to talk about them right now. They'll come back. They all do, right? Every once in a while, they all clap a smile on there. My son-in-law's still waiting for Detroit to come back and he hasn't, it hasn't happened.
I keep waiting for my Cowboys to do that too.
Okay, so adjourn.
Um, we, anything else, anybody else? Okay.
Give me adjourn before the football topic.
The meeting, tourism board meeting, we adjourn 10:05. Thank you, all.
Um, city council did not vote on our new members last night.